United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city clerk please take role?
Yes, Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Bud Starker.
Here.
Joyce J.
Here.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
Mike Stites.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
Joe Demott.
Here.
And Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of November 28, 2011?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
The motion for approval was seconded by Councilmember Starker. Any changes to the minutes? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We have one award tonight, a police citizen award, to Sharon Brightenstein. So I ask the chief, the police, come forward.
Sure.
And Sharon, please step forward. Congratulations.
Mayor and city council, when police department has citizens who step up and do extraordinary things that the police department, members of the police department see and observe, we try to recognize them for what they've done, and we found it to be a pretty effective way of communicating to you as elected officials, but also our community members if we do it at a city council meeting. So we've got the opportunity tonight to recognize, I think, somebody who really went out of their way to try to help another citizen. So I'm going to read you the narrative that I received from one of my officers in regards to what Sharon did. "On October 4th of 2011, Manuel Montano crossed the street against the walk signal and was struck by a turning vehicle. He was knocked from his electric wheelchair onto the pavement. Sharon and several other citizens stopped to provide assistance to Mr. Montano until an ambulance arrived. Neither the ambulance nor the fire department vehicles could accommodate transporting the electronic, or the electric wheelchair to the hospital. Sharon stepped forward and offered to transport the chair in her truck. The wheelchair was loaded into her truck, and then she followed the officer to the hospital, where the chair was given the hospital staff to return to the victim. Sharon went out of her way to assist both the victim and the police department. Her actions demonstrated courage in terms of her stopping at the scene of an accident and helping another person, as well as respect for going out of her way to transport the wheelchair for somebody that she did not even know. For her willingness to assist this person and the police department and the fire department, you are hereby awarded the Wheat Ridge Police Department Citizen Award and a ceremonial challenge coin."
Thank you very much.
Police department has a challenge coin that we routinely give to members in our organization, and the challenge coin, you know, is used in the military and it's used in other paramilitary organizations to signify, you know, a pride in the organization. And we give this challenge coin, this department challenge coin, to citizens who go above and beyond. And the challenge coin has the police department's badge on the front, but on the back it has our patch, and it, and above the patch it reads "Exceptional People Providing Exceptional Service," and that's the vision statement of our organization. And I certainly think in Sharon's case, she's demonstrated that exceptional service to another member of the community.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
The next ceremony we have tonight is the presentation of the Civic Academy Awards. I'll step down to the podium.
Good evening, everybody. It's my pleasure tonight to acknowledge our folks who've been in the Civic Academy. I'd like to thank everyone for joining the city this evening and celebrating the such successful completion of our fourth Civic Academy that's held this fall. The Wheat Ridge City Council has made civic engagement a priority in Wheat Ridge, which has resulted in new and innovative ways for citizens to participate in local government, and the Civic Academy is just one of those ways. And many of our Civic Academy participants have actually ran for elected office in the city of Wheat Ridge. Tonight, I'd like to ask the city council to please step down here, and as you come up and get your award, please shake everybody's hand on city council. So our council will stand up here. I believe the Civic Academy is a great introduction to the Wheat Ridge government, and I hope that residents we recognize this evening choose to stay involved in the city for years to come. Over the course of the program, participants got a close look at many services the city of Wheat Ridge provides, why we provide those services, and the role they play in ensuring a quality of life in the city of Wheat Ridge. As our token appreciation, each participant will receive our certificate of graduation. So I am going to announce those folks, and please step forward and get your plaque or your little coin and graduation award, and then please make the round, and we'll take a picture at the very end. So I have Sally Bangart. And Marcy Emily is not here tonight, and Daniel's not here. We had Marcy Emily, she's not present, and Daniel Feinmaster. We had Maureen Keller. Susan O'Gard. Hope I said that right, Susan. And the last person I, how you, Jean Shirley, please step forward. So we're going to go ahead and take a quick, a couple of photos here. The next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak. Citizens' right to speak is reserved for members of the public who wish to speak on any item not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed three minutes. Others may donate their time to the speaker at the podium for a total of nine minutes. When you're speaking at the podium, you will see a green light when you start speaking, a yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and a red light when your time is up. So please step forward for public comment on any item not on the agenda. And please say your last name for the record, and please give us your city or your address.
Hi, my name is Lori Snow, S-N-O-W, and I'm a Wheat Ridge resident. And I'm here just to voice my concern over the, I understand that the mayor has decided to use his discretionary funds to pay Lily Griego for not, and she did not turn in her campaign finance report, and I'm concerned about it because of the people that also didn't turn theirs in, and they paid their fines without complaint. And also, I'm concerned of what kind of precedent how the council and the future city clerk are going to be able to enforce any future fines. I think it sets a precedent that anybody could complain and not have to pay fines. And that worries me, because it worries how is the city council going to be enforced, be able to enforce stuff in the future. I understand the other financial concerns that go along with it, and I know it's a very tough decision to make that, because it could potentially cost the city more money. But I also think it's not fair if someone complains, then they don't have to pay fines.
Thank you. Please step forward for the next item on, or next speaker.
My name's Mac Clutier. I'm a business owner in Wheat Ridge, and also the president of the Wheat Ridge Rotary Organization. And I'm here tonight to present the first of five annual installments of $3,000 for the Public Art and Off-Leash Dog Program. Our club in Wheat Ridge values the close partnership with the city. The partnership started with the construction of the rec center. We contributed $31,000 so that the community rooms could be expanded. This contribution demonstrates our continuing commitment to the community. The community's support of our fundraisers like the Carnation Festival, Beer Garden, gives us the resources to continuing reinvestment in the city. A short list of our community projects are the following. Each year, we contribute a scholarship, four-year academics, and also a two-year vocational scholarship to the high schools in Wheat Ridge. We also contributed $15,000 to the artificial turf at Wheat Ridge High School. We partner with civic organizations to help the Feed the Future Project in Wheat Ridge, and each year, we also give the third graders a dictionary and the fourth graders a thesaurus at Wheat Ridge elementary schools. We outfitted the Head Start Building in Wheat Ridge with medical equipment for off-site screenings. Over the last five years, we've purchased more than $1,500 for the Wheat Ridge Rec Center. We contributed to the Senior Resource Center Capital Improvement Fund, as well as the, as well, we put together gift baskets into holidays for families that are experiencing hardship in Wheat Ridge. We participate in organizations such as the Arvada Wheat Ridge Senior Service Abassadors for Youth Program, and also donate the Home and Garden Show baskets, flower baskets, to Wheat Ridge nursing homes. We co-sponsored the peer training program with the Wheat Ridge Police Department, and sponsored the Joe Pitt Coffee Shop at Wheat Ridge High School. We send students to a week-long summer leadership program called Ryla, and it is my honor to present the first of the $3,000. If Patrick Goffey would come up and accept this check from the Wheat Ridge Rotary Club.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any other comments under public comment before we move on? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight? Move on to decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item one, Councilmember Stites.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce motion to adopt the 2012 regular city council meeting calendar. I move to adopt the 2012 city council regular meeting calendar as presented with three amendments. One, there'll be a study session after the January 9th meeting, a study session after the January 23rd meeting, and a study session on January 30th.
Is there a second? You have a motion for approval was seconded by Councilmember Reinhardt. Discussion on the calendar?
I wanted to bring up some discussion. I know as I walked, as I was campaigning and walking door to door, there was a lot of comments about town hall meetings. And I was, wanted to open up the discussion to see if there's a couple of these study sessions, even if we do it quarterly, that we set these up, or even half of it up for town hall meetings, and perhaps each district could sponsor one of the town hall meetings. But I thought we could always try and send something out if we had the dates preset for the year. So I just wanted to open the discussion up for that possibility.
Any other comments or questions about, I guess you're talking about district meetings, first Monday meetings?
Yes.
In the past, council had first Monday meetings with each district. The two council members would sponsor a meeting, districts one, two, three, and four. They would meet on a Monday rather than a study session. I think that's what you're referring to.
Right, or even if we wanted to open it up to a couple districts, have two districts and open it up that way, so more people are welcome. But have it be more of an environment that gives people more than three minutes and more of an open discussion.
Any comments? Ms. J.
I was just warming up here. Were you thinking of, in addition to the study session, is what I think I heard you said, that half of it would be sort of a town meeting and the rest of it would be study session?
Yes.
Not preempted study session?
Yeah, I guess if our agenda, if we need still the study session, do the study session, but if we can get, if we can do the study sessions other times than just the town hall meeting, I think either or, or both.
I, I'm so in favor of having any kind of citizen ability to really participate. I think that's great.
Ms. Stites.
Patrick, we'd have to look on that calendar and see, maybe we could do it on a month or wherever, where there was a fifth Monday. And that way, it wouldn't interfere with our study sessions. So maybe, we may have to take that to a study session and find out what, what months there might be a fifth Monday.
We could go through that real quickly right now if you'd like. I know there's, there's one in April, there's one in July.
Typically, three to four a year.
October.
April, July, and October?
October, and that's it. December, but that's New Year's Eve. So.
Mr. Reinhardt, did you have a comment?
I guess I support the idea of having those meetings. I, I, I'm wondering if the forum of having it as out, completely separate from the study sessions, I mean, the study session sets our regular business agenda, and unless we, you know, cancel those, are we, are we losing our work session? But I think we should be trying to find some way to meet that need. I mean, I really do. And I'm not, but I'm not sure that.
Well, if we went with the fifth Monday, and that would give you one in April, July, and October, so that would give you three for the rest of the year, which is.
And that would be great. And then for 2013, if it ends up being successful, then we'd probably get four, because in January, it looks like we're missing one. But then we could set up those dates, and the folks would have that on their calendar.
Well, let's put out a memo then, that it would be the April, in April, July, and October then, on the fifth Monday.
So it's on the calendar?
Well, let me ask this. Could we, could we do the, I mean, if we really wanted to go on to that program, there was an agreement to do it, we could reconsider the 31st of January and extend the other meetings. Could we cover our business basis that quickly? And could we formulate by the end of January how we would handle an open house from an administrative man? Shall we skip the first one, I guess is all I'm asking. Is it too much to ask?
Skip the January.
Well, what I'm wondering is if, if there is in fact a vote on this, and we agree to this, could we do, go ahead and start now with the January 31st? Or are we, are we already too far behind on the other issues?
Just because of the, I think, I mean, all the other meetings that are canceled because of holidays, we could use the 30th. We could always move it. We do have, well, actually, I think we have some scheduled already, don't we, for the 30th to come in to start talking about priority-based budgeting. We have outside source coming in, but.
And I'm okay with starting midyear.
30th would be a little bit quick, because you've got to get those out about six weeks ahead. So if we could plan then, possibly then, for April, July, and October, that would give you three.
Right.
So what I recommend is we have a main motion, and it was seconded. Does that mean you want to make an amendment for those three dates, that there would potentially be a town meeting or a district meeting?
I would like to make an amendment to add the fifth Mondays, which would be for the months of April, July, and October on our calendar as town hall meetings.
I'll second that.
Well, now, you want town hall or district meeting? Do you want to meet in your own district, or do you want to meet as a group in a town hall setting?
You could say town hall or district meetings.
Let's do town hall or district, because if we only have three meetings this, this year, we might have to share a couple.
So we have, we have an amendment to add three, three fifth Mondays to second, three three fifth Mondays to a town hall meeting or a district meeting, was seconded by Councilmember Starker. Mr. Snow, do you have a comment?
I was just going to point out, as, I mean, January, as the city manager has mentioned, is pretty tight. You're trying to fit a lot of meetings in there. You have two canceled in January and February that are possible. You might consider a town meeting on the evening of President's Day. The city's closed, so that's not a good day to have a formal meeting, but it might work for that need if it just helps the early part of the year. Just wanted to point that out.
Is everybody clear on the, on the motion or the amendment, that we're going to possibly add either a district meeting or a town meeting on those three days?
So we're, we're voting on the amendment to Council Stites.
Right, from Kristy Davis, right. Please poll the council on the amendment.
That motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. So we have the main motion now as amended by Councilmember Davis on the council. Mr. Stites?
Yeah, excuse me. What we'll have to do then, like for the one in April, July, or October, is to get together and find out if we want a district meeting, or do we want a town hall meeting with everybody. So we can, we can work that out, because that gives us time to work that out.
Any other comments on the amended motion? Please poll the council on the amended motion.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. So we have the main motion now as amended by Councilmember Davis on the council. Mr. Stites?
Yeah, excuse me. What we'll have to do then, like for the one in April, July, or October, is to get together and find out if we want a district meeting, or do we want a town hall meeting with everybody. So we can, we can work that out, because that gives us time to work that out.
Any other comments on the amended motion? Please poll the council on the amended motion.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Ms. Davis, would you mind writing something up, the motion for the clerk's office, just in writing so they have it? Just, just for the future, the, any amendments that are not in the packet, or that shouldn't be written out, or given to the city clerk sometime during the meeting or after the meeting, so he has a record on it.
Actually, it's, it's best to get them right away, because I've seen far too many times, it's not 100 percent clear to everybody what that motion is, especially when they get pretty complicated.
Yeah, if you're planning on making some amendments, you can bring something in at a time. Okay, item two is motion to appoint election commission. Councilmember Davis?
Motion to appoint an election commission term ending December 2013. The charter creates an election commission whose charge is to establish election procedures in certain circumstances. Charter section 2.4 provides for the appointment of an election commission. The charter directs the election commission to be appointed at the first meeting in December, following a ready, a regular city election. So there's three applications. A recommendation, a motion would be to appoint Lloyd Levy and Wanda Sang to the election commission.
Is there, is the motion on there?
It's, that would be a motion. So I move to approve Wanda Sang as a member of the election commission, term ending December 2013. And I move to appoint Lloyd Levy as a member of the election commission, term ending December 2013.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the main motion?
I guess, how do we, so, so this, is this, how do we have a discussion about which of the three applicants that we have, some of whom we haven't seen tonight? How do we have a dialogue on?
Oh, just go ahead and, we have a main motion. You can discuss the main motion. You can amend it. You can discuss any comments. Normally, what we do is, on the main motion, I'll let Ms. Davis speak first on her motion, and then people can respond to her comments after the motions.
So I'm definitely open for discussion. My recommendation was based off of Wanda Sang's experience as a past city clerk and councilperson. And then, the other recommendation was based on just trying to have some diversity and district representation. So Lloyd was from District Two, where the, where Peter, or District One, where Peter was from District Two. So I was just trying to also have some diversity. So that was the basis of my motion.
Ms. Langworthy?
I guess my question is, do we, can we only have two? I mean, if we have three people who are interested, can we have all three?
Well, it's actually.
No, the charter limits it to.
It's defined by the charter.
Okay. Well, no, I just thought I would ask, and I mean, if you have three interested people, it would be a shame to lose one of them that's interested.
Unfortunately, the charter, charter kind of occupies that. It says the commission is three persons, one of which has to be the city clerk. So you're left with your ability as to appoint only two.
Okay. Ms. Davis, do you have some more comments?
So another one of the things that I wanted to discuss in, later in the agenda, was to bring up a review of the two charters, the Chapter Two of the election section and Chapter Seven, to perhaps modify those, those charters based off of some of the experiences we had with the recent, as far as with grievance with the city clerk, to see if there's a way that that grievance could have been heard without multiple legal fees, if we could set up a commission that could support that. So that was going to be a motion that I was going to have also in, later in the agenda.
Under elected officials' matters?
Yes.
Mr. Reinhardt?
I guess I do see the benefit of having former councilwoman Sang's experience in the, on the election commission, and I believe that all three of these would have been adequate candidates. But I'm going to second the motion and support Lloyd Levy and councilwoman, former councilwoman Sang, to be the election, on the election commission. So I think that's a second, is it not?
We already had a second.
Okay, so I'm supporting the.
Supporting it. Mr. Snow, who was second on that?
I have Mr. Stites.
Okay, so we had a main motion for councilmember, by councilmember Davis, for Lloyd Levy and Wanda Sang. It was seconded by councilmember Stites. Any more discussion? Mr. Starker?
Is there, is there some reason why we would vote for both of these in one motion rather than voting them independently?
No, you can actually ask for a division of the question, or you can vote separately. Anybody wants to ask for a division of the question? Mr. Starker?
I would ask for a division of the question.
Okay, that's, that's fair. So the first motion we'll vote on is for Lloyd Levy?
You want me to restate them?
No, you, you made the motion. We're dividing the question. So we're voting on Lloyd Levy right now. So please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Now we're going to be voting on councilmember, or councilmember Davis's other motion for Wanda Sang. Please poll the council.
That motion also carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We're done. Item three is the motion to approve a communication tower. Councilmember Starker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce a motion to approve a communication tower lease agreement with Verizon Wireless LLC. At issue here is Verizon Wireless has negotiated a lease agreement to assume the space in the city's communication tower currently occupied by Quest Wireless. Verizon Wireless had earlier acquired the Quest contract with the city, but did not utilize the tower prior to the Quest contract termination. The Verizon lease provides for a 15-year term with an additional, an initial yearly rent of $24,000. The rent will increase by 4% each year. Verizon will build an equipment building behind City Hall adjacent to the T-Mobile facility, along with six new parking spaces to the west parking lot, to compensate for the three parking spaces lost for the equipment building. Is the motion in order at this time?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve the communication tower lease agreement with Verizon Wireless LLC.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval of item number three, seconded by councilmember Demott. Discussion on item three? Please poll the council.
Motion carries, excuse me, motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item four is a motion to award the bike pedestrian streetscape design contract to Charlier Associates Incorporated Boulder, Colorado, for a not-to-exceed amount of $89,917. The city council 2011 strategic plan goals include the development of preliminary streetscape designs along primary, primary arterial streets in the city, and the completion of the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. A planning design project was developed to address the arterial streetscape design and complete an additional phase of the bicycle and pedestrian master plan corridor conceptual design. Charlier Associates Incorporated has been selected using the established procurement process.
of $89,917. The city council, 2011 strategic plan goals include the development of preliminary streetscape designs along primary arterial streets in the city, and the completion of the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. A planning design project was developed to address the arterial streetscape design and complete an additional phase of the bicycle and pedestrian master plan corridor conceptual design. Charlier Associates Incorporated has been selected, using the established procurement process, to perform the design work for a not-to-exceed fee of $89,917. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to award the bike pedestrian streetscape design to Charlier Associates Incorporated, Boulder, Colorado, in the not-to-exceed amount of $89,917.
Second.
We have a motion for approval of item number four, was seconded by Councilmember Stites. Discussion on item four? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda for this evening. We'll move on to city managers' matters.
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to let the council know that Chief Brennan and I visited with the new principal at the Wheat Ridge Middle School, Warren Blair, last week, and he gave us a tour of the facility, and updated us on, on the progress of the changes they're making over there. And I just would like to report out that I was, I was very pleased and amazed at what's, what's going on over there. So I think we have a lot to look forward to with our new Wheat Ridge 5'8" school, and excited about its progress. So that's all I have.
I would agree. It's going well. City attorneys' matters?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
City clerks' matters. By the way, this is our city clerks' last meeting officially. So thanks for all your hard work and all your good work for the last five and a half years. Mr. Snow?
Yes, thank you very much for recognizing that. I've had a good time doing this. It's also been trying at moments. But I'm always, you know, I'm always honored to be able to serve my community, so it's been a lot of fun and very rewarding for me to be able to do this. I do take my job seriously, and I, this is my last meeting, but I have to raise at least one issue tonight that I find of very serious concern. I know the mayor's attempt to help settle the issue with Lily Griego was in an effort to actually save the money that might, that might cost the city. But I'm really concerned for several reasons on this. One, the city clerk is actually elected to protect the citizens' rights around elections, and that includes the citizens' rights to know what our elected officials are doing with their campaign finances. And when you have a candidate who refuses to submit those reports, the clerk has to consider what the best way to handle that. And they have, you know, as a clerk, I have the authority to decide whether a fine is assessed. It's not based on anything except what I think is right for our citizens. I knew very well that might mean, because I knew that Ms. Griego was threatening to file a complaint against me, and I knew that would cost the city money to actually hold that hearing. But the important thing was not whether it was going to cost the city a little bit more money to actually hold that hearing, but whether or not the citizens' rights to know what Lily Griego was spending on her campaign, whether that, that should be protected. And our city's the only entity that can do it, and that decision should never be overridden by another city official. And much less, using our city funds to pay it back, I don't care how you slice it or dice it, does give the impression that it is okay to refuse to submit your reports. And if you get fined by one official, you can simply court another to get it back. And I don't care how you look at it, that's what it looks like. This is not to meant any, be any personal judgment here. I just want to point out how dangerous it is, and I hope it does not continue in this fashion for the next clerk. We do need to protect these things. Sorry to end on that note, but it's something I care most about, more than anything, truthfully. So thank you, and I'll be around.
Thank you. Mr. Demott?
I just want to thank everybody who came to the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority open house of our first house that we have rehabilitated with the CDBG money. I want to thank all the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority board members, and Cornerstone Realty, and Larry Nelson, for putting on the open house for us. The house turned out great, and is going on the market tomorrow. We have two more in, in the works, and they should be on shortly after the first of the year. They should be for sale also.
That's it?
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Reinhardt?
I have a less weighty matter of concern for the clerk moving on, and I appreciate his service, but we're going to be left short, a marathon runner, on the, on the, on the Wheat Ridge team in the spring. So I call on Councilmember Pond to take the clerk's position in our five-man team, running in the, in the Colfax Marathon next, next spring. So I'll do that, but Michael, you'll be missed for better reasons than, than, than that one. So thank you for your service.
Thank you. Mr. Pond, you're on deck now.
The rebuttal?
Because you have to run, yeah.
I will say, I can swim that faster than I can run it, so I would not, not look to me for that. Thank you. I want to thank the citizens who, who participated in the Civic Academy, and encourage you to stay involved. I was, had the pleasure of doing that a few years ago, and it's been very important for me. So thank you for coming and doing that, and being recognized tonight. And thank you, Michael. I've, after that, and through that process, had the pleasure of working with you. You've made it extremely easy to come down and be involved in running for elected office, and take some of the intimidation and mystery out of this, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. I'm sure many people who have run would appreciate that as well, but thank you for all your service, especially for the personal service to those of us who are stepping forward for service. Thank you.
Councilmember Jay?
Michael, goodbye. It has really been a pleasure serving with you, and I think you've been very informative, and just a real pleasure to work with. I've enjoyed it. I hope that your future is rich for you. And Civic Academy members are graduates. Congratulations to you. It's, it's an absolute delight to go through the academy, and I, your group, as well as any that's gone through before. It's very informative, and I, it gets me feeling really great that we have citizens who want to learn about our community, and will continue, and hopefully, to serve, to help the community. And I suppose I could say Merry Christmas, because we will not be addressing publicly again, will we, before then?
I think we're done for the rest of the year?
Well, we're never done, but, but anyway, Merry Christmas to everybody.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
I'd first like to thank, Michael, as a not-so-distant candidate, you were very supportive in the process, very clear in your expectations, and I really appreciate all your help and feedback through the process, because you made it very easy for all of us. So thank you. And I'd also like to request, if possible, for us to put on the study session, that the council review the elections, Chapter Two, I think it's Part One, Charter, Chapter Two elections, and then also Part Two, the Code of Laws, Chapter Seven, in one of our study sessions, because I would like to look at some processes, if possible, one, to add a member to the commission, especially since we do have people that are interested, and also to look to see if there's processes that we could set a place, in place, that might not be as costly, but still meet the expectations of our city clerk.
Is there a second for that motion?
I second that.
We have a motion to have a study session discussing the charter election, and also Chapter Seven elections, seconded by Councilmember Jay. And once again, I'd ask, maybe you can write that, jot that down for the city clerk. Did you have a timeframe you were asking for, Ms. Davis?
I know our agendas are full, so when you can...
Next available. Is that fine?
Cut.
This time next year.
So the motion is for the Chapter Two of the charter, Chapter Seven of the code, for the next available study session. It was seconded by Councilmember Jay. Please poll the council.
Well, I had to finish in good form. I hit the clear button instead of... Hold on a second. Let's try that again. Okay. Couldn't make it that easy, right? Motion carries eight to zero, and since that is the last one there, I would want to say I have actually a lot of notes and thoughts of that already. It just came so late, a little too hard to get it to the council. So let me start with that, and I'll maybe just provide them to the city attorney. You guys can play with them as you wish. There you go.
Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Davis?
Well, thank you.
Ms. Langworthy?
Thank you. First of all, Mike, you, you mentioned that we had a citizen complain about the secrecy sleeve, and I, and you thought, we thought it might be a good thing for citizens to understand why, why we did, why you guys, as an election commission, picked what you did. I'd like that first.
Yes, actually, so let me just give you the details. So there was a concerned citizen who, a citizen who expressed concern that secrecy envelopes were not automatically provided with the mail ballots. And the concern was, when they, when they found that they weren't sent to anybody, that we somehow had, had broken the law. And I wanted to make it really clear, first off, that although we're used to receiving secrecy envelopes in your ballots, with your ballots, those are provided as part of the county's election procedures, and the county conducts those statewide elections. The statewide elections are required to provide you a secrecy envelope. Municipal elections are not. And that was a conscious decision by the election commission to not print and provide secrecy envelopes, because we had at our disposal a process and a procedure, which is well-known and very standard used in many cities and by the county, that procedure is used by election judges to remove ballots from their envelopes in a way that assures the anonymity of the voter to their ballot. I can't possibly describe what that process looks like. You can only know if you will come into City Hall tomorrow and watch some of the ballot processing, you'll see how that process works. But because we knew we could do that, and it was standard practice to do so, we made the conscious decision to not spend the extra money to print the secrecy envelope, and essentially, use those strategies, you know, those techniques that we know, keep that, the secrecy there. The citizen was concerned, and still felt that we should have, and that's okay. I can understand. We have the same concern about voters' anonymity. We take it very seriously. So again, come watch if you are curious to know what this process looks like. Yeah, thanks, Tracy.
Thank you. And then, I'd also like to thank Peter Marks for helping us get through this initial period of runoff election. Is this the first one in our history? I wish that we could have everyone who was interested in doing this, because we don't usually have such a great turnout of people interested in being on an election commission. So, I mean, to have three people interested in a two-slot position is, is actually fabulous to me. Also, I just want to thank the Citizens Academy participants. I was one of the first, in the first group, and it was, it was very enlightening, and it's something I truly recommend for citizens who want to know more about how their government works, and much more than what you get on a Monday night, Channel Eight session. It really gives you how we interact with other cities, other counties, states, federal government. So I think that is definitely something citizens should participate in.
Thank you. Councilmember Starker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to also congratulate the graduates of the Civic Academy. I spent, had the pleasure to spend one day in the academy, and I took the second Saturday off to walk the neighborhoods, and part of the election campaign, and I suppose that worked out okay. And so, anyway, I appreciate your, your willingness to learn about your city, and hope that you'll continue to stay engaged and involved in our, in our civic lives here. To Mr. Snow, I'd like to express my thank you very much, and hearty congratulations for a job well done in conducting the electric, the elections. I think you did, you did everything in your power to make it a clear, and a fair, and honest, and open process, and I appreciate that. As we are not going to meet again until after the new year, I would like to wish all of the citizens in Wheat Ridge a very happy, pleasant, and peaceful holiday season. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stites?
Yeah, Michael. It's been a pleasure serving with you. Appreciate your efforts, and, and I think you've done a very good job, and thank you. And I hope the future brings many things for you.
Me too. Thanks.
As I wish it would bring many things for everybody around here. This would be a great time to relocate your home or business to Wheat Ridge. If you need any help, see one of us, staff would be happy to help you. Please try to do a positive thing with the economy the way that it is, and if you have children in college, or you know somebody, they may not be able to fly home this year for Christmas, so please see if they need a, a place to come and eat and stay. It could mean quite a little bit. And as always, please try to find it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, I wanted to thank Mr. Snow for all of his service as city clerk. I think part of our democracy, and our, as a representative for my government, we can have disagreements, and still move forward and move on. So I appreciate your comments, and I hope you appreciate mine and my actions to save the citizens some taxpayer money. And also, I wanted to ask Heather, is the Citizens Civic Academy, is that once a year now, or twice a year? Once a year, so that's in the fall? So I wanted to encourage our citizens to look at the Civic Academy next fall, and also wanted to thank our, our participants. Once again, we had Sally Banghart, Marcy Emily, Daniel Feinster, Maureen Keller, Peter Marks, Susan O'Gard, and Jean Shirley. They attended the Civic Academy for this fall, and did a lot of good, good work, working with our staff, with the elected officials. So thank you again for all your hard work, and hope to see you around in the city, doing other things. And I also wanted to remind everybody that the last day of school will be January 16th, or, I'm sorry, December 16th of this, this week.
Kids won't be happy with you.
December 16th. And the high school students, remember to hit the books for the finals, the 15th and the 16th. The books don't hit back, so please read the books, and then get ready for your finals on the 15th and 16th. And with that, like...
Would you, would you call my son?
Wasn't he watching this? This is riveting material. Hit the books, hit the books. And like always, I wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and a Happy New Year, and we are adjourned.